Charlotte, how's it going? Hi, how's it going? Good. It's nice and morning, isn't it? Is it just the two of you guys today?
It is. Mr. Kessler is out of town.
Okay. How are you?
Come on.
Good. How's it going?
It's going.
How's the band?
Very good. That's fine. The whole thing.
It's good to see you.
All right. Seven o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. Charlotte, you're first up.
Hey, thank you. So, um, Fall Festival is coming around the corner, going faster than... So it's gonna be Saturday, September 23rd. I'm kind of going back and forth on the timing. Last year, it was four to eight. This year, I was thinking about going a half an hour early because of the time, the darkness.
Okay.
But, so if it's okay if I can leave that up in the air for a little bit till I find out.
I would say it was not an issue. Yeah, that's fine.
And, um, I listed the vendors, the food vendors along with, um, other people. I was thinking about doing a tight bike parade in between the, um, first intermission with the band of having... Last year, there was just tons of kids that went through the road with skateboards and then little kids. And I thought that it would be kind of fun to start with the little kids and have them decorate their bikes and maybe the police department kind of helping with that. I did talk to the police department. They are aware of, um, what we're doing and the date. And he also has gotten Duncan on board to bring donuts and have the kids decorate the donuts. So that should be kind of fun. So, my concern, one of the concerns I had last year is because we use this for bathrooms and also for electricity to, um, put, plug in. The kids go nuts in here. Um, they're pounding on the piano and, and I had fun in about three or four times. I am trying to find out how much it would cost to get a port, at least one porta potty so we could... Can you lock this door right in here, this sliding door, so nobody can get through?
Uh, he has a lock on those. I'm not aware that we have a lock for that.
Oh.
Um, you know, we could, we could Jerry or something, but I don't think there's a full lock there.
Yeah, so, I don't know because we do need to use the power in here. But last year at one time, there was like, I, when I came in, there was like 10 or 15 kids in here.
How much power do you end up running out to?
I couldn't tell you for sure. The band has traditionally always used Pierce's old house to plug in for them. Um, I know that a couple of the vendors plugs in.
I was just thinking if that was a concern, we could lock you out of these doors and just pull the power through the windows into the outlets.
That would be good.
Um, but again, I don't know how much power we're gonna draw.
So I am trying to see if I can get a porta potty.
Okay.
So...
Well, we can always figure out the, the access in there. I mean, that's, we'll, we'll figure something out if that shouldn't be that hard.
All right. Does anybody have any questions?
No, just let us know when you know all the time and, you know, obviously keep the police involved with the, with the foreclosure stuff, but otherwise, great.
Okay, great. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you, Charlotte. Thank you, Charlotte.
See you later.
Bye, Charlotte.
Bye, Jerry.
All right. Next up, uh, Lily Inspector. So, um, since our last meeting, um, we reached out. Tom Clark indicated that he was interested in providing services. Um, I checked with Larry Shaw. Tom had not contacted him. I provided Tom information. Uh, and asked him to get in touch with Larry. Apparently, he, he has not yet. Uh, in the meantime, there's another gentleman, Jim Maxfield. Do you know Jim Maxfield?
Hello.
Um, was suggesting, uh, I got that suggestion this afternoon. So I'll, I'll reach out to him. Um, again, we're trying to find out, find somebody who will do this work. So as soon as we know, you guys will be the first to know.
Yeah, I have one question. Is there any reason why, um, like Larry couldn't preview everything and he all, that's the...
Jack's time.
Jack's time there couldn't do the inspections as like a ultimate route?
Uh, we can ask. It was my impression that Jack wanted to fully refuse himself from the matter.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the last meeting, he would say, we want to go that route. You could enforce them to do that.
Well, Jack has a conflict of interest. That's why you... You can't, you, I, I can't have Jack do this if he thinks it's conflict of interest. It is a conflict. You don't, I mean, that's something that you don't...
That's right.
So, that, that issue I...
That's one more question.
Yeah, no, no, it's a very hard question. A conflict is a different type. A conflict, again, different with Larry.
Yes.
Conflict of interest is one where it, it's a direct conflict. So in doing that service, for example, if there was an issue regarding, um, something that I have a prior business relationship with, and I had a conflict.
Yeah, I understand.
You can't, you can't waive that. It exists and it's not coming away.
Oh, I understand conflict.
So, yeah, so that's the issue.
I was confused with how this...
No, 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 that's the issue with Jack.
I just wanted to ask the question.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to Jim Maxfield. I, I don't know if my Tom Clark has not followed, followed up. I, I had two conversations with him. He said he was gonna do the follow-up. Um, I was away for weeks.
Is he local?
Yeah, he's Dover? He's, he's local. Um, Jim Maxfield, I was told, is Dover?
Dover.
I think, I think he's Dover.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out, out to Maxfield first. If you want.
Yeah, I was talked to a few times around, obviously, like you guys did. And said that they had some of these, but they wouldn't give me his name.
If you, look, if you get a name and you think it's something we should follow up on?
Yeah, and then people were talking to and trying to, if they wanna do it, then we'll, you know.
Send them on?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any questions, comments? All right. Uh, next up, stone wall removal agreement. Uh, we received this, uh, right from the meeting last, we put it off slightly, but we're going to look at this. So, uh, this agreement was provided by the Vernon's attorney, um, dealing with...
I think that's from Derek.
Is it from Derek? Oh, I'm sorry. Amy made some, made some changes to it. That's right. Thank you. So, yeah, this came from Derek, but, um, Amy Manzelli made changes to it. Um, this is, uh, with respect to, um, opening up the stone wall on the front of the property along Piscassick for a new driveway. Questions, comments? Um, I will look for a motion.
Order.
Oh, yeah, here it is.
Uh, the basic conservation at this moment. Um, we have read to do this at our meetings. We have no laws or protocol whatsoever.
Okay, duly noted? Um, you ready?
No.
I'll look for a motion to approve the stone wall removal agreement.
Motion to accept it.
Uh, motion to approve by Hobie. I will not second it. So it gets tabled. Unless Mike supports it. I have problems with this. I've read the conservation easement. I think that the language in conservation easement is actually pretty clear. That, uh, they don't desire these stone walls to be opened up like this on the borders of the property. Uh, they want to protect the views, especially along the highways onto the farms. I, uh, I have a hard time supporting opening up those stone walls. So...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So there's already a break in the stone wall.
Okay.
Isn't that the issue? That, I mean, there's already a break in the wall. That's why it's in council. Stone wall's not an observation. It's in the state of Maryland.
Oh, okay.
So I understand how the conservation plays a part of that. If it's not even on the easement.
You're asking the town, you're asking the town to sign this agreement, which actually deals with a lot of other matters beyond just the stone wall itself.
Doesn't the town want to move the driveway? Isn't that what the town wants?
Uh, I don't, I don't find that dislocation, personally, I don't find that dislocation is acceptable. Again, I re, I've read this as well. I think that stone wall complies under the easement. Whether it's fallen down or not, it is, does not change the language of the easement where the prior owners wanted those walls along the border preserved. It's said right in the easement. So, again, this is my opinion. I'm not required to support a measure like this. My reading of this is different from the conservation commissions. Um, I find that this, this easement is, is actually, uh, or what, what is being requested here is, does not go along with it. I don't find that they're compatible.
Whatever you say.
I'm just saying, I, I don't support you. All right. Um, if the other board members want, we can bring this up at the next meeting. All right, uh, tree removal for Badger Park and Town Landing.
Can I ask one more question? Very many brought in regarding our farm or not on the agenda that we discussed tonight, like they were last week, last meeting?
Uh, well, there's a lot of correspondence.
Besides that?
No.
Because the last meeting, there was a lot of things that were not on the agenda that were brought up about our farm after last.
Like what?
Sound warnings, all sorts of stuff.
Well, a question was asked about the sound rules.
I'm just saying, it'd be nice if, like, if I knew what was on the agenda, it was gonna be about our farm. I'm talking about it, but often I don't even get noticed.
If it remembers, well, it wasn't, it wasn't a formal agenda either. The question was asked and we addressed the question. No formal action was taken. It was a discussion.
All right.
All right, uh, tree removal for Badger Park. Uh, there was a quote for $1,200 for removal of the tree. Um, so there's a dead tree, if you're looking at Badger Park, uh, to the left-hand side of the park. Uh, it was noted last year, actually. Um, I think with, um, with the removal of the, of the, um, the healthy tree, I think it, uh, pushed people to look at the removal of the Badger Park. So Brian got a quote of $1,200 to remove it.
I would like to have it and get it stumped as well. Instead of just dropping it, we'll stump and make the stump hold.
Yeah, especially from the park. That's a good, that's great for, um, either ground or, or hold.
So make a motion to be, uh, get the tree dropped and get it stumped?
Yep.
And, uh, fill it in with some wood?
Yeah, yeah. So, well, I mean, it'll all, it'll all be part of the, of the maintenance of the, for the park as well. Uh, I'll send a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Uh, Great Bay watershed meeting. So there was a meeting on the 13th. Um, the fiscal meeting is taking place in Rochester. There's also a Zoom for the communities that are involved. Um, this meeting is, uh, to address a conservation law foundation petition. Um, the petition itself is basically asking the EPA to assume, uh, in my opinion, our statutory powers well beyond its, uh, regulatory jurisdiction to impose a variety of, um, regulatory, uh, oversight on the communities within the Great Bay watershed, both those with point source and those without point source, even under MS4. Um, the communities involved have some real concerns about this, especially those under the general permits who have been actively pursuing a variety of methods to mitigate nitrogen outflow into Great Bay. Uh, so the meeting is on the 13th. As a member of the board, you're certainly welcome to participate. I intend to, uh, I have a variety of meetings that day, but I intend to, uh, participate in the Zoom, uh, on that day. So, which one's your rule? Uh, 1:00 till 3:00. And you should have the, you have the Zoom, right? Did I send that right?
I'm looking for it.
Um, it's this, this letter. It has the Zoom on it. But I can send it directly as well electronically, just to make it easy for you. I can do that too.
Yeah, I said it's Thursday or the...
Thursday, Thursday, Thursday. Yeah, so, but just, just be aware. And I'll, I'll obviously be reporting back to the board about, about that and to the planning board as well. All right, uh, so that's the watershed meeting. Uh, regular, some regular business here. Um, so Evergreen Estates deed. Oh, there we go. Evergreen Estates, sorry. It says, you have it there. Okay, great. So this is a quick claim deed, uh, with respect to the last lot in Evergreen Estates. Um, Evergreen Estates had, uh, acreage in the back, approximately 18 acres that abuts the rail trail. It abuts, um, basically the neighborhood and it, um, abuts the, um, fishing game land, which is exempted state of New Hampshire. You see the large parcel there. So, um, this quick claim deed is with respect to the, the small parcel where there's, um, physical access from the neighborhood back to the property. Uh, and the town actually taking, um, over, uh, the 18 acres, um, in that back, that back 18, 18.3 acres. Questions? No. So, uh, I will make a motion to approve the quick claim deed, um, as presented regarding Evergreen Estates. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Great. Uh, next up, uh, land use change tax bill for Lila Lane. Uh, they have a property coming out of current use, is that correct? Uh, and they're going to provide as a land use change tax bill of $20,000 for taking the property out of current use. Any questions about that? This is, uh, map 208, uh, parcel 15.6.
No issues.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the land use change tax for Lila Lane. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Please, the 11th frame. All right. PA 28. Your favorite.
My favorite.
Oh, I'd like Susan up here.
I'd like that one for you.
It's not hard.
I'm willing, it's all good.
Thank you. Uh, PA 28, this is the town inventory forms. Uh, we do these every year. Sue hates these. Teacher doesn't like them either. Um, but there has to be a vote of the board, um, if we're going to continue or not continue using these in form of the Department of Evergreen Administration as directors. So, you know, what forms these are, and user, comments?
Uh, I'm totally opposed to using this form.
All right.
I was last year. I voted against it last year and I find it intrusive. Uh, we have assessments, we have precedence commands and hours to 911 data. They go over a way a few months, a month or so ago that we dealt with. And, uh, I have, I s, I just find it intrusive and not necessary.
Fair enough. So we'll have this until next meeting as well and see where my qualms on this. All right, so for now, the forms are in jail. Um, all right, um, it's good. Oh. It's good. You're right, bud. Uh, okay, um, there's a few open items here. Uh, oh, no, no, I forgot the policies to do. So, uh, New Fields IT policy, New Fields credit card policy. So, uh, I'll do the credit card policy first. Any questions, comments, changes? You're good?
Yes.
Uh, I will make a motion in full to accept the New Fields credit card policy as a regular.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. And IT policy, any questions?
No.
So I have one comment, um, on the top of page two. Actually, if you look at the bottom of page one, which is list prohibited uses. So department employees shall not engage in any of the following practices when using any form of electronic communication to include laptop use. Item F says, "Supporting any emails of any person or entity without the express permission of the sender." Um, I don't find that, um, I find that too restrictive.
I concur.
Um, again, I think, I think people here are fairly responsible about forwarding information. Um, and I don't think it's necessary for them to, or to, to require the, the express permission before doing so.
I think you should do this.
We'll have to, we'll address it. We'll, we'll address it. So, um, I will make a motion to accept the IT policy, but strike letter F under prohibited uses.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Great. Uh, all right, so, uh, the friskless abatement request. This came up last meeting. Um, we had a discussion about it. Obviously, um, everyone wanted to take some time to review this. Any comments, thoughts about it? Again, it's a situation where, just so the public is aware, um, Friskless had property. It was, um, it's been assessed as a buildable lot since 2006, what, 17 years, 16 years, let's talk here. Um, but it was not a buildable lot as was discovered at planning board meeting when it came to discuss possibly developing property. Um, this was obviously an oversight of a lot of people. Friskless is, um, the town assessor. So, we're considering the request for abatement. Anyway, sorry, I didn't wanna, I, I wanted to just make sure that everybody knows what we're referring to.
So Derek's opinion on this, because of the lack of time limits on the bottom of the abatement, is that we're precluded from acting on that this year. It has to be done in a timely manner by the person filing for the abatement. I'm still waiting to hear back from Derek as to how far back our reach can go, because I see some confusion in the statute of law, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, I think it would be appropriate, since we are precluded by our, say, acting on it this year, to discuss it further, uh, once we hear back from Derek.
Um, so, what, what struck me about that was it was unclear to me if we are precluded or whether we are not required, uh, with respect to addressing that this year. Um...
I read it as precluded.
Okay. Wasn't clear to me. Um, but, okay. Well, let's wait till we hear back from, from the other item and then we can take, take this back up and then we'll leave this open. Um, is that pending? Uh, all right, uh, Scott, your correspondence. So, uh, right before the meeting, right after the meeting, last, last meeting? Or right before, right then, right before? Uh, we received correspondence, uh, from an above the Vernon family farm regarding, uh, signage. Um, there were two issues raised. One was the, uh, sandwich board signs, uh, which were, um, along the edge of the property in the right way, or the road, the road edge way. The other one was a question about the, uh, sign display and the town releases. So, uh, we received tonight, right before the meeting, a correspondence from the Vernons indicating that, uh, they removed the sandwich signs, um, saying that, um, by doing so, their signage is now in compliance, um, with the driveway permit, which, okay, that seems to be fine. Uh, they also indicate that they believe that the signs hanging off the building have been there for eight years and don't feel that they are now compliant. been there for eight years, um, and don't feel that they are non-compliant. So, um, I went out to look at the signage, um, that was raised in question. The sandwich boards certainly appear to be gone. Um, as for the other signage, yeah, there are two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 11 signs hanging. Um, I did not take measurements. Um, I don't know, if you have any thoughts on this, okay?
Well, we did, the problem is solved with the sandwich sign, because that was a clear violation. If I look at the, uh, going into buildings, open landing ordinance.
Four, six, one, five.
Page 10.
Yep.
Signs shall be limited in following sizes and following number for zoning district. Entrance and exit location signage is not contours and signed by each one slice of two square feet. Sign at two sides for the count of each one sign, it should be measured using only one side, but by the each is in the same side. When using table blow-off, using two signs, the total square footage is unchanged unless the size. So I see residential agricultural RA.
Yep.
Six square feet, one sign.
Correct. That was less than any of the ordinances.
And there was, there is a history back, going back on this, back to 15, when the issue was raised with the board.
Yep.
Uh, and it went through back then. By the letters, I see only one sign here, but the size issue, I mean, it's kind of, we cut it maybe in half for.
Well, in, uh, look, in terms of the total square footage here, we'd have to measure the signs in order to indicate whether it's a violation of the sign square footage. Um, the number of signs, um, you know, if I recall when this came up, you know, the argument was, well, this is just one sign, um, you know, the interpretation is in open question as to, is this just one sign indicating the list of items, or is it more than one sign? Um, looking at what's out there now, it looks like, and I don't, I don't recall what was up there in 2015, but it certainly looks like there's more signs now than there was then, if I remember correctly. I could be wrong about that.
So I think the issue might go on dimensional, because if you drive through town, there's other signs that have wags underneath them.
Yep.
That have, in fact, been in place for a while also. So I think the dimensional issue is another control.
Um, well, I think the number one also controls. Look, if somebody wants to, to raise an issue with these other signs, then we'll have to address it. Um, again, it's, it's, I, I think our responsibility is to address the issues that come before us, not necessarily have the board police, um, but, uh, address the issues that are raised. Um, I, you know, this, this technically could be a violation of both the number of signs and the square footage.
I, I think it's probably definitely just lagging a square footage issue.
I, I tend to think so, well. My suggestion is, I think, um, what we should probably do is just notify them, and we'll, we're gonna take a measurement, and we'll inform all the parties involved as to what, what the square footage is, and whether it's compliant with six, four, six, one, five, or not. Um, I think that's what it turns down to, right?
I concur that.
Alright, um, so, we'll, we'll do that, and then, any? You have any comments, Scott?
You yourself said that you believe there was 11 signs being displayed. Um, even, I, I think you'd have to calculate the, the amount of change as well. I mean, it's being stretched out on purpose?
Uh, no, I tend to, I tend to agree with, um, and again.
Michael, you do with your mind.
Oh, I, I think there is 11 signs, sir.
Oh, yeah, and I, and I.
In terms of number.
And I concur with the total dimensional aspect of it as it stands.
Yeah, and it's, again, we could have a discussion about, is that 11 or is that one? Right now, unless somebody explains to me why it necessarily is one, and again, without getting into, is it, is it just one sign, whereas, you know, it's the elements of there? I don't know. Um, but I tend to think right now, if I may give you the determination, it looks like 11 signs. But certainly, I want to know what the square footage is.
There was, it got withdrawn, but I don't remember what year it was, but there was a time when they applied, applied, put in an application to the CBA, because they wanted 40 square feet.
Oh, a sign?
Yeah.
That was July 15th, 12th.
And that's, that was withdrawn. Well, in my opinion, a little coaxing from the CBA board to get it withdrawn, so they didn't have anything rolling on it, but, you know, you know, my, my youngest grandson, Steve, if I say that, he'll, how many times, he's, he's gonna tell you, no, no, one.
Yep.
Okay. So, no, understood that. And once again, the change, it's being deliberately stretched out.
And there was numerous references in that process, it was in 15, where, uh, it was stated that they wouldn't comply with all town regulations as far as signage, and the building inspector would sign off prior to installation. So I think this is involved and morphed over the past eight years.
You know, I mean, there's, as I don't know which one of you said, but there are other places in town, I didn't think it was up to me to police them either, but, you know, there is a setback off the side of the road, too, that gets broken from time to time. It's supposed to be 10 feet off.
10 feet.
Yeah, and, you know, there's, there's more than one that are closer than 10 feet, and some of them now have, um, foliage covering them up, because they're not where it's supposed to be.
Mm-hmm. So. Understood. Alright, uh, well, we'll do, we'll do a review of this, and then, um, inform all parties as to the conclusions of, of that. Um, I mean, clearly, the ordinances are pretty clear. Um, I think it's just a determination of this square footage that's being yours. Alright, any other comments on that?
Scott, also.
I'll send out.
Thank you. Alright, uh, hold on. I didn't have the tag on Frisless. Uh, meeting minutes, 22 June 13th. Um, I don't know if you want to review those now, you can always defer those to the next meeting, now that we've got the copy.
That's fine.
Okay. Um, notes, we received, um, correspondence, or basically the publication from, uh, Newfield Water Sewer District on drinking water in town. Um, this typically goes out to everybody in the water district, but they provided this copy. Just a half minute's note that we received that on behalf of the town. Um, here, that's table, checks, um, between where between expenses, in the moment, with those. Oh, we're kind of behind on the motor vehicle, we have permits.
We're just there.
People stop buying new cars? People stop buying new cars?
They're not buying as many new cars when they were.
Interest rates are up.
Yeah, no, I'm sure they're doing.
And 2019, they were buying a lot more.
Yep.
Interest rates one and a half, three quarters, 2%, what's at 6% now?
Great, yeah, yeah. Our interest on investments is way up. Makes up the difference. Um, first we can hold on, but we put back in the budget, we originally think, uh, put back in for spring cleanup there, correct?
Yes, we did.
We never had it.
We didn't have spring cleanup.
Okay. Um, I guess we should look to do it in the fall?
I think it was something to turn around.
Yeah, I think we forgot about it. Alright. Any questions, comments, or any comments?
Sure.
You have another? You have meeting minutes here for 5:30.
Yes, it was the 13th, but it was one hour or a month, or.
Correct, correct. So, yeah, we, we received those minutes for last time. I was just making sure that we didn't include them in the pack, but we had them before. I went through them after the last meeting, I didn't see any changes necessarily, I don't know if you have anything to convey for the May 30th.
No, I do not.
Uh, I'll move the May 30th minutes as written.
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
I know, did you see this one too?
Which one?
The letter from Madison. The email to us.
The letter from?
Madison.
Oh, Conservation Commission report?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, we can, we can just, uh, discuss that, so. Um, I don't know, I don't know which, um, okay, just. So, um.
Tuesday, on the.
July 7th. Oh, the email?
Yeah.
The email was sent on Friday, the, uh.
July 7th.
July 7th.
Do you need to comp any of the documents that you have?
No, no, no worries, I, I have mine here.
I got mine right here, thank you.
So, um, you know, he reported basically on the June 26th Conservation Commission meeting, um, they're looking to revise the management, SALT is looking to update their management plan, um, Mike was, uh, thinking of requesting a change dealing with notice, um, which I'm good with, uh, the town use plan, um, talking about the updating the town plan, um, as I had mentioned before, the, the planning board has, um, has been looking at updating the master plan, so I assume that what he's talking about would fall into, uh, that discussion as well. Um, the last issue he mentioned was, uh, just adding the comments from the Conservation Commission to the prior minutes. Um, do you have a problem, does anybody go back through that? Can you?
No.
Okay, great. Alright. Uh, you have any comments?
No, just curious, we'll see the appraisal of the road property.
So there is a scheduled town meeting on the 18th of July. Uh, it's basically just a informational meeting, um, being moderated by the town moderator to allow the land from people trust to update information about, uh, process, who they've reached out to, they've reached out to several other organizations for support, um, as well as provide additional details to the town as to the property itself, and I assume a ballpark number, any crazy?
Has that been announced?
Uh, yeah, it's on our calendar.
So I was, did the email come out?
I don't know.
I haven't seen it, I guess.
I, I mean, I was gone for a week, so I don't know.
Very often, okay.
So.
What time did it begin?
Uh, 7 o'clock on the 18th here. Um, I mean, we should probably send another email out, if you guys can, tomorrow, just town line email, just informing. Um, so, yeah, so, this should be more informational, please provide it with that meeting, correct? Anything else?
Okay, on that.
Um, oh, one other, one other issue I just want to raise, and I think we have to deal with it right now. So, under state statute, we are required to do what's called a pre-ambulation of the town boards, which requires us, in conjunction with the select board from our neighboring towns, to, like, go out and physically identify the markers for the town borders. Um, you know, there's one right across from you, you know, other shake, so there's, there's approximately 20 to 30 of them, probably surrounding the town, covering the borders. This is technically required to be done every seven years. Hasn't been done since, I think, 2001. I think. Um, so I was going to reach out to the other towns. Typically, under state statute, it's actually the town that was incorporated first is the one that requests a date and time to meet for per, uh, pre-ambulation. Um, we are actually in the youngest of all the towns that borders. Exeter is older, Epping is older, Newmarket is older, all, they're all incorporated before Newfields was in 1849. So technically, they have to actually make the request. Uh, I was gonna reach out, though, assuming that we think it needs to be done, which under state statute, it needs to be done. I was gonna reach out to the towns and say, hey, um, this hasn't been done in some time. Under state statute, you're required to set a date and time. My suggestion then would probably be sometime like, in early November, leaf off, much easier to get around, less water, less swampy, et cetera, et cetera.
Lots of orange.
What's that?
Lots of orange.
Yeah, lots of orange, um, moving in crafts. Don't wander.
No stairs under there.
Um, but that's my, my thought about this, but I didn't know if you had any other thoughts about, about the process, or questions about what needs to be done.
Nope. No.
Alright, so I'll, I'll reach out to them, um, to maybe get this, um, on their agenda so that they can, they can make the formal request back to us, and, uh, and we can, um, schedule something. Uh, my guess is, it's gonna be three towns, three different days, probably. Um, each one probably takes, I don't know, hours. Um, you don't necessarily have to trudge the property lines.
You just gotta find them.
You gotta find the monuments, yeah. And, uh, there's plenty of documentation where the monuments are, but there is some trudging, especially along the Newmarket border. Um, that's where a lot of the monuments are remotely located. Um, the ones on the Exeter border are actually, uh, along the roads, there's one out towards the river, by, behind your property.
Right behind you.
Um, there's one right behind my property, a little, little woods, um, and then there's a couple out in the trails, out in, um, the deer trees trails. You see them all the time, at the top of, um, PBR trail, there's, there's a monument right there in the woods, like, the monument in the middle of, the town border actually goes right through there, so. Um, the Newmarket ones, as I said, those are more problematic. The Epping ones are actually pretty easy, except for the one in the southwest corner, that's out in the middle of a field slash farm, right there, so. Alright, so I'll, uh, I'll make a, make a note to, to do that. Uh, oh, one other thing about that, um, depending upon, um, the other towns, uh, it may make sense for us to, um, actually use a GPS device to get a very specific lat long to better record these. Um, currently, they're basically in D-type language, you know, rods and chains and directional, um, which is fine, I mean, we certainly can indicate that, uh, for the pre-ambulation, but, um, it may be worthwhile for us to also include coordinates for all of these.
And it'd be really easy.
Yes, correct, that's the whole point, right? Now, now the GPS is ubiquitous, um, it would, it should be really easy for us to identify a really good detailed lat long for each of these monuments, so then feature, you know, big background there, huh? Alright?
Couple of things.
Yeah.
Right beach, I'm waiting for Star Day, they plan on doing the steps this month.
Oh, right beach, uh, construction.
Okay. Uh, Jeff Becher is still working on audio options, he's got a couple identifying his version to get a owner of one system.
To try it out?
Yeah, uh, that he's very, uh, large on. And where are we, when, uh, is the rain garden, we're waiting for that.
So, they just again, here before, um, about, I want to say about a month ago, they were here, uh, we walked the front area here, the side area over here with the two town hallways, we went up to the library. The library has some questions and concerns about the rain gardens there, uh, which we may just defer doing. Um, but these two, um, we, uh, we have them designed, and we just need to go out with the work quotes. Uh, so Bill Mazur just got the designs and sent out the information, but should be that hard to get some quotes, uh, and we'll get them done.
And so, when we do that, we'll get this south, this corner cleaned up?
Yeah.
Process.
Exactly, because, I mean, they'll build the rain garden, we don't want, um, it's easier for us for them to do the delineation than us, because they may end up, we may end up screwing up the ground that they need to preserve for the rain garden, so. Once we're done that, I think what we'll do is clear up all of the brush and everything on that side, it may happen at the same time. Uh, and then, uh, as I think we've men, mentioned, the fence issue needs to be addressed, probably makes you a pleasure to get new fences.
And also, at some point, address the fence in the mess behind you.
Yeah, that, that chain link fence runs all the way, yeah, yeah, in terms of getting rid of it, yeah.
One of the other things that I talked to about, and we're just talking, is concerned about, how far do we go down towards the river, as far as town property, do you know? From the parking lot?
Right here.
No, we're in the parking lot area, or is the parking lot the end?
I think the edge of the parking lot is more or less the edge of the property. Um, I think, I think it abuts, uh, well, I.
And just the concern that you, I don't even look down, it's just limbs and trees and cutting back over the parking lot.
So, um, we can always ask the abutters for permission, um, one of those abutters is Simmackin.
That could be a challenge.
Uh, that could be a challenge. Are you listening, Sue? Um, but, uh, we can always make inquiries with the abutters. I, I would imagine that we don't have too much of a problem, I mean, you know, maybe they want to maintain some of that foliage, but, worse comes the worst, we, we ask. That's all I have. Alright, great. Anything else from the general public?
Not this time.
Alright, then I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting on Tuesday, July 11, 2023, at 7:50.
Oh, second to that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Alright.
I'm gonna make it 25. Are you gonna be gone?
I'm gone, that's gonna be you guys.
Okay.
So, uh, you guys can figure out who wants to be in the driver's seat.
Driver's desk.
New guy.